Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the December 13th, 2022 Planning Board meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Belief and the run of the Senate.
Our pledge of belief is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, we have a quorum present with five people. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented. I'm going to turn on my microphone.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the September 13th, 2022 meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting from the 13th or September 13th meeting are approved. Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications tonight? And I myself am not going to vote on the PB 2022-16 campground entrance item. And Mr. Owens will take over. I don't think we have any items of old business. Our first item is PB 20213 Ashbrook Estates Request to Rezone 130.73 Acres From Agriculture to Mixed Residential for Property Located on Maple Road, Tax Map 52, Parcel 12 Crawford Township.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Glave.
Just to orient you to the site, this linear piece here is the Maple Airport. This is just west, you'll see the swamp, the grainy picture there is part of the swamp. We'll zoom in a little bit so you can see it a little better. Again, the airstrip there, Maple Road. This is the county's water departments and water plant. And then the adjoining piece is the piece in question. You'll see that is currently zoned agricultural. The land use plan, or Imagine Currituck, classifies this as O2, and we'll talk about that a bit more in a minute. This property is in the Maple-Barco Small Area Plan, and it actually has three classifications. It has transitional, conservation, and then just a little bit of rural, which is this pinkish color. Just to show you, there are potential wetlands on the property based on soil characteristics of our wetland layer, and that's basically the tree line that borders up to that swamp that we talked about. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but in your packet you will see this list, and the applicant is requesting a conventional or straight rezoning, and you'll hear me use those words interchangeably, from agricultural to MXR or mixed residential. And the table that you're looking at here are the uses that are allowed in the agricultural district versus those allowed uses in the MXR zoning district, and you can compare those. Primary differences I did want to bring up that we discussed in the work session when it was asked about dwelling units were the agricultural use or single-family detached manufactured where MXR allowed, the duplexes, multifamily townhomes are for story dwelling units, et cetera. There are other differences as well, but I wanted to say we did discuss that. You heard me say that this was a conventional or straight rezoning, and that's opposed to what's called a conditional zoning, which is something you typically see. And conditional zoning came into effect in 2007, and that's a tool that the Planning Board and Board of Commissioners have used to help guide and develop communities that help establish the character and recognize the value of adopted plans. And that conditional zoning application is preferred because it allows the applicant to impose conditions that are agreed upon by the board to specifically address any impacts that the proposed development may have on those communities. It provides predictability with the rezoning application to know what that development request is going to be, what the uses are going to be, and it allows you to determine if those uses are going to meet the county's adopted plans and policies. The request does not allow for conditions to be placed on the rezoning if you do a conventional rezoning request. The state of North Carolina legally does not allow you to place conditions on a straight rezoning or conventional rezoning. And it's only required to meet the minimum standards of the UDO. They cannot offer to say do additional buffering if there's concerns about something or any other amenity or concessions that might be adopted. Since the adoption of the UDO in 2013, the only conventional rezonings approved, including properties that are downzoned to a less intense zoning district, properties that are bifurcated, which means split zoned, and one property that was adjoining zoning district on three sides, it was the same zoning district on three sides. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but remember we said we'd come back and talk about the O2 land use plan classification, and what O2 is, is reserved lands. Basically, that's comprised of wetlands, environmentally sensitive lands, significant natural heritage areas, significant habitat areas, prime agricultural lands, and lands that should be targeted for conservation, farmland preservation. Typical development are county parks, public water access and related amenities. So since this is a conventional rezoning request, and a plan is not required as it is with a conditional rezoning request, it is not possible to determine if the policies relevant to the zoning map amendment are being met. And unless you want me to read to you, I'm just going to read the policy goals and numbers. I won't read the actual policies themselves unless you tell me otherwise. So some of the policies that we cannot determine if they're relevant are infrastructure and county services goal and policy 1 and 8, transportation goal and policy 1, environment goal and policy 1, 2, and 3.1. Similar situation, this is in the Barco-Mapple Small Area Plan. And this is the plan that we said the property is split between three classifications, conservation, rural, and transitional. The purpose of that plan is to balance the growth and economic expansion with the integrity and character of the existing community, and this really takes into account the growth of the airport facility and protecting county resources such as the drinking water, we pointed out, the water department and the well area, preserving the agri and heritage of the area, and maintaining a high quality of life for the current and future residents. And since the conventional zoning doesn't require a plan, we're not able to determine if the following policies are being met. That would be LU 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, TR 4, EN 2, and 3, CH 2, and 4, SD 1. I'm going to switch these. Just to show you, this is also, this is a map out of the UDO. There's one in your packet, but I think it's smaller. This shows that this property is also in the airport overlay district, and it is in compatible use zone 3. The purpose of the airport overlay district is to protect and preserve the county regional airport and surrounding land from incompatible uses. And then there's other purposes there as well. The maximum density allowed is that of the base zoning district. So currently, the base zoning district is agricultural, so the maximum allowed density currently is one unit for three acres. And again, since we don't have a plan that's not required with a straight rezoning, it's not possible to determine if the purpose of the airport overlay district is being These are the standards in the UDO that the board can use when determining whether or not to approve or deny a rezoning request. Now to get more into what is an MXR district. The purpose of that mixed residential district is to accommodate a wide variety of residential uses at moderate densities, as well as very low intensity neighborhood-serving, commercial, personal service, and industrial uses outside of community and village centers, mainland or outer banks. It's intended to provide moderate-cost housing options for county residents within well-designed neighborhoods and developments that incorporates open space, and it may include some non-residential uses. It accommodates such dwellings as the single-family detached apartments, townhomes, manufactured homes on individual lots, accessory dwelling units, live-work developments. It also allows offices, neighborhood-oriented personal service uses, retail uses, institutional uses, and when you think of that, think about parks, churches, schools, religious institutions, recreational facilities, et cetera. There are design standards that development in the MXR district has to use that are applied to multifamily and non-residential purposes. And the thing about a conditional zoning is the process can be tailored to the use in such a way that it can accommodate the property owner's interests, the community values, and the neighborhood character. And it can also be narrowed down to the specific property and the adjoining properties in the adjoining neighborhood to ensure compatibility. And we also need to mention that there's also school capacity concerns, since the September numbers that we got from the school show the committed capacity for the Moayak-Shawboro Central Elementary School, which this development would be slated to attend, is at 135%, and the high schools are at 106% committed capacity. In order to subdivide any lot below the three acres, or one unit per three acres, I should say, the BOC must first approve an amendment to the Imagine Currituck's O2 classification to a classification suitable to whatever planned density the applicant has in mind. The conventional rezoning request results in substantial density increase for the property. Now, these are just very, very broad assumptions, and please keep in mind that these numbers are merely rough estimates, and that true lot counts can only be rendered by a design professional with known factors provided in a master plan. Number one, that the BOC would approve an amendment to Imagine Currituck. Number two, this is just with an assumption to what that land use plan classification might be. There's an assumption for the amount of wetlands, that the soils would be suitable, those kinds of things. So again, these are very, very rough numbers. But currently, in the agricultural zoning district, the property could be developed as is under a traditional development, it would be a conservation subdivision. Under conservation subdivision, you have two choices. You could develop under open space at 50% or 60%. Both of those have a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet. The lesser of the open space, your density is a little lower, so you'd come in somewhere around 43 lots. With the 60% open space, you do get a little bit more density, so you'd come in around 52 lots. Again, a very, very rough estimate. No multifamily, no non-residential allowed as it currently exists. Now, with an assumption of G2 controlled growth, I'm not sure if that would fit with whatever the plans the developer has in mind. That was just based on, there's some adjoining property that has that G2 classification, so that's just the one that I chose. I'm not sure if it'll fit what they're after. That would allow for up to 130 traditional subdivision lots, but they do drop down to about 15,000 square foot. It could allow up to approximately 175 multifamily units, or up to 229,000 square foot non-residential units, or a combination thereof. This is a legislative decision by the board, and in staff's opinion, that in the absence of a development plan, it's not possible to determine consistency and reasonableness of the proposed development with the adjoining properties, the neighborhood, Imagine Currituck, the Maple-Barco Small Area Plan, the UDO, including the airport overlay district, in place to protect the airport and its associated uses. To provide assurance that address the Imagine Currituck Plan, Maple-Barco Small Area Plan, and the purpose of the airport overlay district, staff recommends the applicant submit a conditional zoning application with a development plan that is conceptual in nature. The conceptual plan could provide desired flexibility for the applicant with assurances that the application maintains the community values and consistency with the officially adopted plans, policies, and standards. And with that, I will put up the UDO standard for rezoning, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Glave or? Yeah?
The conditional, excuse me, the conditional rezoning that you would recommend, that can be very specific then to a development, and would really take into account the airport overlay district. Because when you look at agriculture zoning, you know, they can even put towers, you know, on, under that, and I'm like, no, I don't know about that right next to an airport. But with a conditional rezoning, you can be very specific as to what is done and make sure it is in conjunction with these other stipulations and requirements.
Two-part answer. There are height restrictions around the airport, so no matter the zoning, there are height restrictions depending on where it's located in the approach zone. And two, yes, the conditional zoning can be very specific.
Very specific to the environment around.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, was there anyone present to represent the case tonight?
Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Jason Mazel with the Timmons Group, here on behalf of Ashbrook Estates LLC to talk about the rezoning in front of you this evening. I'll talk on a couple of points. The first I'll start with is the, let me make sure I get this microphone. The question of whether or not to come in front of you with a conditional zoning or rezoning request. One of the issues that the client has with the conditional rezoning request is that, yes, currently, the way the requirements are, it requires a plan, a really thought-out, designed plan for your specific things that you're going to do. And right now, with the way the market is, that's, there's a lot of question there. What they really want to do with this project is look at a variation of different uses on the property, whether it's more modest, single-family homes, potentially maybe some multifamily, potentially maybe even some commercial elements, whether it's a pharmacy or something like that, to play off of the other things that are going on in the Maple-Barco community. So to have a specific plan today and then still have it be relevant six months from now is very difficult. We've talked a lot with staff, not just about this particular project, but other projects, about whether or not we could look at just making the conditions to uses, but the way the current rules are written, that's not how we can proceed with a conditional rezoning. If it could just be limited to uses, I think we could be a whole lot more amenable to that. I had a recent conversation with Donna Volova about another piece of property, kind of the same thing, and there's discussion about potentially looking at that in the future, but as of right now, it's not an option for us. So that's why the client, or the applicant, has elected to come forward with just a straight Looking at the land use plan, the previous land use plan, the small area plan, had a good portion of this property in that transitional area, and I want to read something for you real quick from the small area plan that speaks to transitional. So, let me find that. Did I stick it in? No, there you go. What did I do? There it is. So, under the definition in the small area plan, "Transitional designation is appropriate for areas between land use classifications that may contain non-compatible uses. Transitionally designated areas should be allowed greater flexibility in the types of services and uses. These areas provide an opportunity to ensure future land use conflicts are minimized through careful attention to the existing context of immediate surroundings and thoughtful site design. That may incorporate, include incorporation of increased buffers, low-impact development techniques, architectural standards, preservation of culturally and historically significant landmarks." So, that kind of sets the stage for having a variety of things be a part of a development project. It's a little interesting that when the new land use plan was brought forward, properties on either side kind of remained in that more flexible designation, but yet this property as a whole was taken completely out of that. I would have thought maybe some split like it was before would have been more appropriate so that you still had that same allotment like the properties on either side. The classification of, Tammy, you had it up a minute ago, the-
Which one do you need?
The G2 classification. That does somewhat fall into play with the MXR zoning, and that's what we would like to see the Commissioners adopt as far as an amendment to the current land use plan. The applicant started this process before that plan got adopted, so unfortunately, we're falling in the mix of being just behind it, coming forward with this request. Again, there's not a specific master plan or set of criteria that they're looking to do at this moment. What I can tell you is that one of their biggest desires is to provide some moderately-priced homes to this part of Currituck. We have so many state and local government offices right here inside of a five-mile area that, you know, the average teacher or DOT employee can afford a $300,000 townhome. So trying to find some way to provide an option for those folks that are on the, maybe the lower tier of the middle-class income, is a big component of this. There are also other community needs in and around this area that could be met with this type of zoning, you know, potentially a pharmacy. I don't know if any of you have seen like the little, the mini Walgreens that are popping up here and there now. I saw one last night in Williamson. So, things like that have the potential to come into an area like this where Moayak has a lot more commercial going on, they have a lot more opportunities up there to service that multitude of growth that's going on, but an area like this kind of gets left in flux. You're either driving to Moayak, driving to Elizabeth City, or driving south to Grandy. So, those are some components that are being looked at as potential purchasers of property within the master development. Short of that, you know, that's kind of where they're at, what they're looking to try to do. These are local people. Stuart Ennis is the managing partner for the LLC. Like I said, these guys are business and home builders in the area. They're fully vested in their local community, and they want to see a good product come out of this eventually. So, short of that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant, Mr. Mazel?
There were some questions during your, I guess, community meeting about traffic and drainage. To just do a, you know, to just change the classification, kind of, I mean, how does the traffic, you know, come into play? The drainage, I mean, 175, it's so, it's so broad. It can go from 130 lots, 175 units, just, you know, that creates a lot more traffic.
Well, and I think the other thing to look at too is, I think the maximum allowable density is probably unrealistic for what can fit on the property. So I think, you know, you have an allowance of X, but what can you physically fit on the roughly 106 of the 130 acres that are all uplands? And what will the septic fields allow you to do? You know, a 15,000 square foot lot probably isn't going to function with a septic field. You know, you're probably still looking at 25,000 to 30,000 square foot lots. So I don't think you're going to see those kind of numbers on a project like this. Now, as far as how things are dealt with as far as transportation and drainage, we have very, we have very strict rules as far as the drainage goes. We have to buy by those no matter what kind of development we're doing, whether it's a conservation subdivision in the ag, or it's a townhome development in an MXR. We still have to make those numbers work with the county's drainage ordinance. Transportation, if it's going to be over a certain number of trips, DOT is going to require a TIP study for any development plan that comes forward. So again, there's going to be opportunities for technical staff and other state and local departments to weigh in on potential development plans. And again, your ordinance has meat to it, it has teeth to it, to keep uses in check as they come forward with development plans, whether it's a buffer, whether it's a setback, whether it's, you know, stormwater regulations. You've got a really good ordinance that has a lot of teeth to it. So keep that in mind as well. This is not a set use, it is a zoning of varying uses, but they also have to meet that UDO in the end as they come forward individually.
So, is, it seems like, the way I hear you is that this is carved in stone if you put the plan now. Is that really the case? I mean, can somebody from the county answer whether it's got, be able to diversify off that plan, or do we have to go back to ground zero to change his plan?
My understanding is that if there are changes to the plan, we have to bring it back in front of the boards.
Okay.
There are minor amendments that are allowed, but if you're making substantial changes to the plan, then it would come back before the board the way the ordinance is written today.
Is that, is there a definition to-
Yes.
Okay, there is, okay.
And unfortunately, what that usually means is a lot of upfront design cost for something you don't know you're going to get approval for. And it's, you know, for someone, for a larger developer that potentially has the kind of bankroll to do that, it's fine.
Saying that.
But for most smaller community people, it's not.
I get it, I get it.
It really comes down to an economics issue.
So it's, it's not just being restricted from what you might be able to do, it's more so, how much investment do you want to put in at this stage?
Right. And that's where, if we were allowed to restrict uses versus having to bring a plan forward, I think that works a whole lot better to have some negotiating on the table between an applicant and the county, but unfortunately, that's just not the case right now.
Is there a list of uses from the county now in the restricted use that you have, or is there one published?
Well, the table of permitted uses that's in your packet is what's allowed in those uses.
Does that not fit with what your grand scheme is, or?
Well, the uses that, what we would like to see are in the MXR. Now, one thing to note is things like multifamily still require a conditional zoning- Now, one thing to note is things like multifamily still require a conditional zoning even to move, so if a portion of the property wanted to be multifamily, that would have to come back for a conditional zoning. So, there are a few specific items that require conditional zoning, even in the MXR. Even if the MXR was a base zone for this property today, you'd still have to come back in front of this board and the board commissioners to ask for that conditional zoning.
Okay, okay.
In our work session, there was a comment about a shooting range for public safety. Where is that located?
Thank you. That, the sheriff's department has a new shooting range. This-
It's an open box that you see just south of the property.
I was going to say, y'all designed it. Where is that?
Go to the whip, to your left. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Keep north, up, right there. Yeah, that's the shooting range right there.
Thank you.
That looks like a pond, I mean. Jason, what we've, what we're wanting to make sure of is, one of our board members, Mike Corbell, who's not here tonight, he's a sheriff's department deputy, and he just wanted to make sure that we brought that up-
Right.
-and notified everybody that it's there and they didn't want any surprises later on.
Exactly. Fully aware.
Happens there and, you know, what's all that gun shooting going on?
Yep.
So, we're just making sure that we bring that up for him since he's not there tonight.
Absolutely. Well, and I think, I think shooting ranges are one of the allowed uses within ag, so. But, you know, we're very aware that that's there, and I actually had a hand in some of that work when that was done for the county, so.
Would it be too forward to ask what, right now, your initial plans are for the property?
I think right now, they're looking at primarily the smaller, single-family and coming back with a multifamily component. We've played with some master plan, again, you know, nothing's set in stone, but looking at potentially having more of a general business sector on the south side. Again, this is just, you know, from what rough ideas we've done the last several months. They've got some interest from commercial investors as far as people that might want to do something there, but most of them don't want to hang their hat on anything until the zoning's in place. So, we're in this catch-22 with, without the zoning, they can't get a commitment. So, it's-
It's a double-edged sword.
Yeah. And again, nobody's got a crystal ball on what the market's going to do. This is a different part of Currituck. It's not Moayok. It is a little different, and so it, they want to approach it with kid gloves where they want to do the right thing at the right time, but they need, they need the right zoning in place, so.
What school district is, what elementary school district is, I saw Moayok-
Elementary is central here.
Is central.
Yeah, central is literally-
I didn't see the capacity number.
When the schools do their districting, they group elementary schools into a district because they can shift the lines, and this one is Shawboro, Moayok Central, and that is at 135% committed capacity based on their September report.
Central by itself probably isn't at capacity, but with the fluctuations in Moayok and Shawboro, they're always having to look at it.
Okay, and I understand.
But all three of those, I think, go to, well, no, central probably goes to Currituck's, Currituck Middle, don't they? I know Moayok and Shawboro go to Moayok Middle, so.
The middle schools were okay in September, but the elementaries and high schools were over their committed capacity.
I know the high school number's a little off because some of those students are going to COA, and there's empty classrooms sitting there at some parts of the day. So, that, even that's a little bit of an odd number, but you've got to take it straight for what the student population is. I don't think they've come up a way, the gauge at what times during the day they've got to up or down a percentage.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
I'm still trying to pin this down. So, on the conditional use, you're, you really rather have it as MXR is where you're going?
Yeah, MXR is what we'd prefer. If we were to come forward with a conditional zoning and just list, say, these five uses, I think that would be fine, because then we're not locked into a plan, but we're locked into uses, but that's not an option for us.
It isn't?
No.
Okay. I guess, I guess the next question's for the county, that if it is conditional use, can it be changed back to MXR or that's just out of the question? I mean, can he submit for MXR when they have a detailed plan of what they want to do?
He's submitting for MXR now.
Oh, okay. So, you're, but you want conditional use?
They would rather see a conditional zoning with a plan.
Okay, so, can you resubmit if it is conditional use back to MXR if they have a detailed plan? No?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
I just want to, he's in a conditional use, MXR's off the table?
They're requesting MXR, a straight MXR, and what our suggestion is to do a conditional MXR, which requires a plan.
Okay. But to answer your question, I don't think there's any reverting back. Right. What goes down, goes down.
I mean, the other, the other option is-
As he pointed out, the individual components, some may have to require a plan or a special permit. Oh, absolutely, yeah. I understand.
Yeah, there's a number of uses that would require a conditional zoning or a special use permit or conditional use permits. There is a lot of, again, there are, a lot of the more dynamic uses still require coming back in front of both boards.
Okay.
And an applicant can always propose a text amendment to change the conditional zoning requirements as well.
Okay.
I mean, staff has talked about it, but an applicant can absolutely propose a text amendment as well.
Is the airport any kind of concern with noise? I mean, I can't imagine there's a lot of noise there, but, I mean, is there any, like, issue that noise could be a factor? I guess if it grows, but.
There'd be a disclaimer that would have to go on the plot that it was in the airport overlay zone.
Yeah, guns and planes.
Yeah, I mean, Brady, Brady Air Park, I mean, those stipulations are in their covenants as far as the adjacent proximity to the airport. So, those are things that are encouraged to have placed in the covenant so that, you know, any buyer knows what they're getting into, so.
That's what I was trying to ask. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, I'll open the floor to public comment if there's anyone present who wishes to speak on this item. Anybody? All right, I don't see anybody. Close the public hearing. Any questions or discussions coming forward? Nope. Okay. Hearing done, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to recommend denial of PB 2213 Ashbrook Estates because it is not possible to determine if the request is consistent with Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan Policies and Goals, Infrastructure and County Services 1 and 8, Transportation 1, Environment 1, 2, 3.1, the Maple Barco Small Area Plan Policies, specifically LU 1, LU 3, LU 4, LU 5, LU 6, LU 9, TR 4, EN 2, EN 3, CH 2, CH 4, SD 1. Additionally, the Airport Overlay District Purpose, and the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest because the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest because without a conceptual plan, it is not possible to provide assurances that address the Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan, Maple Barco Small Area Plan, and the purpose of the Airport Overlay District. This is a low-density agricultural community, and the rezoning from ag to MXR could potentially triple density and allow non-residential uses. Without a plan, it is not possible to determine compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Tom.
All right, I'll second it.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm a vote no on that. Motion passes. What's that, four to one?
Mm-hmm.
All right. PB 22-14 Portus LLC requests for conditional rezoning of 1.29 acres from single-family mainland to conditional light industrial for property located at 8778 Carrot Oak Highway, Harbinger, Poplar Branch Township. And, Mr. Littoral.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. As you said, Portus LLC is requesting to rezone 1.3 acres from single-family mainland to conditional light industrial. The property is located just north of Edgewater Road, which is where the Exxon is, and across the street nearby would be the new Dollar General at the south end of the county. Zoom in a little bit here, and you can see the existing buildings, Quonset Hut-type buildings that have been on the property for quite some time. You can see here that surrounding zoning districts are light industrial and general business, with the exception of the property to the rear, which is zoned single-family mainland but largely vacant. I think the important thing to understand with this rezoning request is that this business has been in use there for, since 1986, when they were granted a use permit to operate a surfboard manufacturing, light manufacturing use. And the zoning back then was also general business, so in sometime between then and now, it has gotten rezoned to residential zoning. Because the use never stopped, they were allowed to continue, but now that they want to do an expansion by adding an extra building, it requires a conditional rezoning, and that's why we're here. The land use plan, the current land use plan categorizes this as a G3, which is appropriate for this use, so it's already in the correct classification for the land use plan. And just some bullet points I'll go over just to reiterate, was granted a use permit in '86, been operating continuously, currently zoned residential, and they're requesting the ability to expand the current use. One thing I would like to mention is that, as you can see here, these are the existing businesses, this is the current layout of the site. When the applicant first came forward, they were planning to have this building be to the back of the property, behind the existing buildings, but we ran into some issues with access to that because of the required width of the fire access mainly. They couldn't really get that fully in there and get around the buildings. So, that has forced them to place the building in the front, as you can see here, the proposed conceptual plan. So, now the building is closer to the road and not in the back, which does, in fact, bring it farther away from the residential zoning in the rear. Of course, there'll be buffers and that sort of thing required for that, to protect that. But that brings me to, well, here, before I go there, you can see the proposed elevations here as well for the new building. The land use plan, this request is consistent with the land use plan, and in particular, land use goal number three, which says to support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to quality community appearance and design standards, including landscaping improvements and signs tailored to achieve a unique community character, as well as economic development goal one, to support the retention and expansion of existing businesses and promote the development of new businesses, especially those that help diversify the local economy and are compatible with the county's natural amenities and environment. We did put one condition, the technical review committee would like to recommend approval with this one condition, that the building design, since now it is closer to the street, not in the back, it's going to be visible as you're driving down the highway, we are recommending a condition that the building design standards of the ordinance be met or exceeded to ensure consistency with land use goal three, which spoke to the design standards for businesses. So, the conditional zoning request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan and other applicable county adopted plans and purposes of this ordinance. It is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the land, subject to the application, and is the appropriate zoning district and use for the land. It is reasonable and in the public interest because it would result in a logical and orderly development pattern and would not conflict with the public interest and is in harmony with the purposes and intent of this ordinance. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jason, could you go back-
Yeah.
-to the, to the conditions that you guys-
Oh, this one, yep.
Okay.
Is that something, needs to be included in a motion if somebody chooses to make one?
You can just say that you're recommending that the technical review committee, committee conditions are part of the approval, are the conditions, and those are also need, have to be agreed upon by the applicant.
Anybody else have any questions?
I can't get the question I had.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Is there anyone present to represent the applicant? Come on up, guys. State your name and address for the record.
LG Shaw, 1900 Cypress Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board.
Yes, sir.
I'm Michael Strater, engineer with Quaidland Associates.
All right. Did you guys have anything you wanted to say or present, or you just want us to hit you with some questions, or?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate what you've just heard from the staff report that, and also what you have probably read within the submittal packets, that this application for conditional zoning, it is certainly in conformance with your county land use plan. It'll be developed in complete conformance with your county UDO dimensional standards, all state permits, local permits that are going to be required and necessary. We did host a community meeting, we actually did have some adjacent property owners participate. We actually heard some pretty positive feedback, and generally, overall, the sentiment was supportive of the application. There was no opposition. For those that don't already know, the applicant does own not only the subject parcel, but also a parcel that's a little farther north, actually just south of the water park behind Bay Disposal. So, the idea here is to, you know, on a day-to-day basis, there's, there's people that are moving product back and forth up and down your highway between those two facilities. So, the idea is to move those facilities so that it's all on this single parcel, so it's a, it's a much safer and more efficient operation. And as you heard from your planning staff report, yes, the idea was, the intent was to develop the new building in the back of the parcel, but as we moved forward, and as evidenced by the previous- and as evidenced by the previous agenda item, it's often difficult for some applicants to understand the amount of time and energy that is an investment that's needed to get to this point, but it's absolutely necessary for you and your county staff to have this information so you can make these determinations. As we were doing all that, we recognized that we couldn't provide safe, the adequate fire access to the back, so that's why you're seeing this development in the front. And I know the applicant's desire is certainly to, to have an attractive building frontage. Our intent is to preserve as much of that front existing vegetation as we possibly can, while still, you know, being able to design all the necessary improvements and the, the septic and whatnot. But, um, probably forgot a few things I wanted to say, but I, basically, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that we are both here. We wanna be available for any questions that you have during your deliberations.
Sure, sure. Does anybody have any questions?
Will this be general public retail, or is it just?
No, ma'am, we, we do, we do sell, um, wholesale, basically, to other surfboard manufacturers in the area. We, we are the, the distributor for most of the surfboard, um, raw materials, anything north of Florida that the folks get, we, we ship a lot, but we do have, um, some of our neighbors come, come through to pick up that stuff. But no, nothing, our, our other arm is, is wave running vehicles, the retail store, we have that, we have one here in, um, Kitty Hawk, and then our other one at Virginia Beach, but, uh, no, we, we won't, it won't be retail consumer-facing in that way.
Okay, so the traffic won't be an issue?
You're purely distribution? Or are you guys, are you doing design, shaping, and finishing?
Yes, this is the, the shaping, so right now, our shaping facility, uh, is up behind the water park, and that's where they do the shaping and the airbrushing. So we're moving basically unfinished surfboards in a van, and the highway has only gotten busier since eighty-six, just a little bit busier since eighty-six. Uh, we, we built that in the nineties, so it's still busier than ninety, so we, we have to move those boards, and it's, it's just, the, the, the life-flight thing lands next to our factory every week in the summer, you know, and I hate my guys having to pull out in the vans while they're worried about their carton of eggs in the back, you know, to move back, so the goal is to put all this on the one property and, and, and hopefully improve efficiency and increase output, but, so shaping, glassing, sanding, and then, and then the, the finished boards are leave there to our retail stores or our other dealers that we have.
Where, where is that currently happening now? The, uh, that work is at your other facility, and you wanna move it to this one? Is this one just distribution now?
Uh, no, so this is the sanding, uh, the glassing and sanding, all the finishing work, yep, so the shaping, the shaping and airbrushing is done up at the water park, and then moved them down here for the, uh, the, the glass work and the sanding, and then, and then they're distributed from there.
Gotcha, yeah.
It's great to have you in our community.
Thank you, we love being here.
Have you ever tried to, to sell to the Corella Surf Shop?
We, I would probably sell them some, uh, some ding repair kits and stuff like that, yeah. And nice to see Kevin, that's, uh, sorry, Virginia Beach lost ya, but hopefully it's a good addition down here. We, we love working with you up there.
He's a great addition here. Good, good to see him. Well, I know, as long as I can remember, you've been there and it's never been an issue, it's been an asset to the community, so.
Thank you. We, we enjoy, and, you know, for, to get on my soapbox, but we, we love, you know, every, everything in our surfboard is, is American-made, and that's our goal. We, we own our print shops in Virginia Beach, we print all our own T-shirts for our stores, and this, the surfboards, the, if you ride FCS fins, they're made overseas, but the fin plugs, if you ride future, ninety-nine, nine percent of everything that goes through that factory is American-made, and we enjoy being able to, uh, continue to grow the, you know, the American jobs.
Well, hopefully you stay around a little longer.
It's still USA made, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? I think we're good, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I'll open the floor for public comment, if there's anyone here to speak on that. Close public hearing. Any, any further discussion at this time? Hearing now, open the floor for a motion.
I'll move to recommend approval of PB twenty-two dash fourteen Porpus LLC, because it is, the request is consistent with the land use plan goal three and economic development goal one. The requested, I would also like to make sure that we include the TRC conditions, so please include that. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, it would not conflict with the public interest, and is in harmony with the purpose and the intent of this ordinance.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's your turn, Mr. Earl.
Yeah, it is.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item, I don't get to vote on, so that's all you. You, you got those, don't you? You just, okay, you gonna stand over there, you side over?
I'll stay right here.
All right.
I will stay right here. Next item on the agenda is PB twenty-two dash sixteen, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Use Standards to Change Campground Access Requirements.
Thank you, sir. Just to give a little background of this, it's, it's a to-be-continued and a new case all at the same time. Um, of course, a text amendment applies countywide and is not specific to one piece of property, but one piece of property did bring this to light, so we'll, I'm gonna give you a little bit of history. July eighteenth of this year, um, the H2OBX campground received, um, zoning approval, H2OBX water park received approval for a campground. And if you remember, during that review, um, at the time, the text was worded in such a way that all the portions of the campground had to be on the H2OBX property, and that included the access. So what that meant was that the current easement that shared by, um, the Griggs, Ballant property and others, as well as the H2OBX water park, um, could not be used for the campground access. So, the way that language was written required the water park to show an access entirely on their property, that created what was called during the meeting, a parallel access. The Board of Commissioners did not like that. Mr. Ballant spoke at the, the hearing, he did not like that, and of course, the, the water park folks, um, also spoke that they didn't like that either. Um, and at that meeting, the board directed staff to come up with language that would correct that, so that way that all the parties could continue to use the easement as they had worked out amongst themselves, and, um, not require that parallel easement, I'm, I'm sorry, parallel access is there. So, that's the, um, text amendment that the Board of Commissioners have requested, and that's what you're seeing before you tonight. It, the TRC reviewed it and had no issues with it, so it's just, just a slow process that it's getting before you tonight. So, basically, two things in the text would change from the campground text amendment, as we, as we call it. Um, one would be, um, first, except for access, all land used for campground must be one parcel and under the same ownership. The board still felt it was necessary that the major arterial still be a component of the campground, so that way you could not have campgrounds that were not at least abutting or adjoining a major arterial. So, instead of saying that a campground should be accessed from a major arterial, it now will say that the campground shall abut a major arterial. So, while that specific case brought this issue to light, um, that specific, this text amendment applies countywide. The goals and policies that, of Imagine Currituck that are being met are LU two, or land use two, economic development one, transportation one. Those are the text amendment review standards that I'll bring back. And staff recommends approval of this request as submitted, as it suggests the text amendment, as suggests the text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Currituck. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just trying to wrap my, my arms around this. So, out front towards the main road is the water park, correct?
Yes.
And then the campground, which is not a campground yet, it's, it's been approved for a campground, correct?
Correct.
And then the undeveloped, uh, hundreds of undeveloped acres behind that property?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. All right. And, the, from understanding correctly, it was initially intended that the campground have its own property rather than using the current easement that the water park is using?
That is not correct. The campground is on the water park property.
Okay, so it's on the water park?
It's all the same piece of property.
Okay, but you want the entrance of the, the campground to be on the water park property? Because right now, even the water park property, if I understand correctly, is not, or the easement is not, um, part of the water park, it's an easement.
That's gr, the initial entrance is on the water park property, then I believe it crosses over onto an easement, but the, the Board of Commissioners' language that they adopted in the UDO requires that the access for a campground be entirely on the property owned by the campground, therefore, the easement did not work. So that's why the water park shifted the entire access over onto its own property, which none of the property, none of the property owners that spoke at the meeting agreed with, and the commissioners agreed that that wasn't good to have the two parallel entrances. So, they said to come back with the text amendment to what you, what you see before you.
Okay, um, the, um, so there, there will be, or there will not be, three properties sharing the current easement?
I don't know how many properties share the easement. I mean, there's the water park property.
Okay, so the water park and campground are together, so?
They're one piece of property.
Okay, two, two properties then, that share that same easement?
It may be more than that. I mean, that's, that's a private property agreement, I can't tell you that, how many properties share that. The, how the, how the access easement is worked out is a private property agreement that, that we can't be a part of.
Gotcha, okay.
We can only regulate how the campground property, how the campground itself is accessed.
Okay, gotcha.
Changing the wording, I'm sorry, are you done?
No, no.
I apologize, I'm so sorry. But changing this wording, does this, um, affect any other campgrounds?
It conceivably affects all campgrounds that are proposed not existing, because there are not any existing currently under the new ordinance. So any that are gonna be proposed would have to meet this, this new requirement as well.
Because, I, I mean, that actually is, actually, a big change, when you say abut and access, that is very, that makes a big change.
Like the existing campgrounds, like Bell's Island Campground, Sandy Point Campground, those are legally non-conforming campgrounds, they're not subject to the new ordinance, it's only those that apply under the new ordinance that would, that would have the subject to them.
Does this affect, um, well, no, I, I, okay, I was gonna say, does this, how does this affect the property surrounding? I mean, I don't think it would, it's for them, that's their access anyway, the, the easement access, so.
It's not gonna?
It's only campgrounds, so there's no campground affected by that currently standing, okay.
The only campground that this will currently affect is the water park campground. Although it applies countywide, it just so happens that that's the only one that's currently approved under the new ordinance.
Are the rest of the campgrounds all conforming campgrounds?
I can't speak to that, I, you would have to have a code enforcement officer go out and inspect.
When, um, when, when we call it a major arterial?
Arterial, that's defined by DOT.
Okay. What, what exactly is a major, uh, I mean?
It's, it has a very specific definition that I don't have memorized, but think, um, one fifty-eight, one sixty-eight, highway thirty-four, NC twelve, NC six fifteen, I'm missing some, but that's most of them.
So it's not just a DOT road, but it is a major DOT road?
I'm just curious if, um, if the campground were to have its own access through the water park, um, would that all have to change again if they sold the campground individually? Would that then be an easement, or how would you work through that?
Well, they would have to subdivide off the property to sell it separately, and then it wouldn't be large enough to be a campground. So I don't know that they could do that.
Interesting, okay.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll open the, um, floor for public comment. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on that item tonight? Come on up, state your name and address.
My name is Ken Griggs, I'm one of the members of GB Investment Group. My address is one forty-eight Lucinda Lane. She's stating that the county doesn't have anything to do with the easement, it's a private matter, but if you look at the front sheet of this, what you're proposing, it clearly states on here that easement as well as access point for water park, as well as access point for campground, it clearly does not mention our property, which is GB Investments' property in the back, that owns probably ninety-nine percent of the easement and right away to the properties. So until county staff can change some of this wording on this, I would like for you to table this. There's, I mean, there's too much at stake for us at, um, for our property, for the county staff to come, or for the county to come in and hurt us on future development, or any other things that we would like to do to, with our property. Where later on, they say, oh, we have approved a RV park that can use this road and this access, and then deny us the use of our own road and access.
Ken, may I ask what you're looking at?
Yeah, I don't know if I have that either. Did you find it?
Oh, the memo, yeah. It's speaking, that's not saying that they don't have rights to their own easement, that's not something we can control or say who has access to it or not, that's saying that the, that the campground would be allowed to use the easement, where previously the campground would not be allowed to use the easement based on the text of the UDO. That's just saying that the campground previously could not use an easement, but based on the new wording, the campground would be allowed to use the easement.
Because of some of the last-minute changes that county staff did for the water park, they changed the, like, two hundred, two hundred yards out front. They claimed it was, uh, like a driveway, it was something in the UDO, like, about changing like a driveway, which was a main entrance to the water park, which then cut us off for the rest of our property. It took us all the way up until now without having to go through lawsuits to get this straight. And we have it right here, and this covers two, two things, this, the water park and our property, and it does not cover a RV park. Now, that, that is something that's deeded with the county, you can look it up. So when she's saying it's a private matter, it could be, but when the county does certain things, it hurts people.
I think if you read the sentence again, maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding the concern because it says that the shared access easement could continue to be used by all parties using the easement, and as the access point for the water park, as well as the access point for the campground. I mean, the county cannot legally restrict who uses a private easement, I mean, that's, I'll ask Kevin to step in on that too, but we don't have the authority to restrict who uses a private easement that we don't own.
But if I were to come back later and want to develop my property, and I have to stand here in front of you, and then you tell me, oh, there's too much usage of this road right now going out to 158 because of traffic concerns, then all of a sudden, I am going to be restricted to what I'm using my property for. Our easement agreement was with OBX, the water park, not a RV park.
Now I think I understand. Now we're back to a personal property issue between the two users of the easements, whether or not they want to allow a higher use on the easement than what they currently have an agreement to. Because if there's a health, safety issue when they come to develop their issue with traffic, then yes, staff's gonna bring that to your attention. But I think it's important to remember, the county's not gonna regulate who uses the easement, who can use the easement, that's not in our purview, we're not legally allowed to do that. And this, this text amendment is not, first of all, it, I mean, it is about the water park, but it's not about the water park or the Griggs' easement, it's how a campground can be accessed. And how they work out the details is, is on them. I mean, whether they come to an agreement that the campground can use it or not is up to them, that's not, that's not.
That is not necessarily true. If you come in and you allow this to happen, it's directly affecting us and our property.
How so? Explain, how does that directly affect you?
If, if, if all of a sudden now, later, I come back and say, hey, I want to develop my property, and then all of a sudden, you do a study and go, oh, sorry, you can't develop your property because you need, now need to go out and put a stoplight at the end of the road, or there's too many people accessing 158 from this one property because of a RV campground, then all of a sudden, I'm limited to using my own access, my own right-of-way. There's all kinds of rules and regulations. If, if HGO wants to put something in writing, or the county wants to put something in writing that says that they're not gonna harm us by allowing them to come in and add a RV park, then that's perfectly fine. But it directly relates to what could go on with our property. We have one main entrance into our property that we allowed, that we have an easement agreement with them on. And that's directly related to this right now. If they were to put their RV entrance on their property, it would not affect us at all.
They have approval to do that.
I'm sorry?
They have approval to have the entrance entirely on their property.
Why is that being, I mean, does, why is that being, why aren't they using what was approved?
Because at the meeting that night, the parties involved here spoke and said that they were agreeable to an amendment or even a variance to allow everyone to use the easement that we're speaking of, so the commissioners directed staff to do this text amendment so everyone could use this easement.
So if, if we were to deny this request, does the campground have a problem with access?
They have an approved access right now.
Is there a problem with that approved access?
I can't speak, you, you can ask the applicant if there's a problem with using that access, but I, I can tell you they have an approved access to their property.
Okay, okay.
I do not have a problem with them coming in and putting in a RV park or using the easement or access. I just want to make sure that later, if we come in to develop our property, that we're not gonna be hit with, like, some kind of fees or something where we have to come in and, and dump tons of money in there just to be able to access what we already own. Does that make sense? If we come before y'all and all of a sudden you go, oh, you can't, you can't develop your property. We have, we have 460 acres behind the water park.
Can, can the county regulate that, what's being?
We can't speak to the future and say that there's not gonna be a traffic issue in the future, and that they're not gonna be required by DOT to put up a traffic light or something.
But it could be in this amendment that they have to pay for it if there is a traffic light that's put in.
I, I, that's a lawyer question, I can't, I, that doesn't sound right to me, but I'm not a lawyer.
It's like a capacity, like a school capacity.
Yeah, that's, that's just like a school capacity. It's the cost of doing development, and who pays for it is an attorney question. If you want to develop property, there's, there's a cost of doing that. Who pays for that is an attorney question.
Yeah, I see the point here, it's just, I'm wondering which side's it on, it's on the legal side or the county side, but it, it seems like it's on the legal side as far as the easements to say that, you know, if something has to change to the easement to allow the more traffic, that all, all parties are involved with that expansion, is what you're getting at, is, or?
Right, but our easement agreement with them says that they pay for everything.
Oh, well, that's, that's not county, that's legal.
Well, but, but, but then all of a sudden, I'm right back into the same thing I was with the water park. It's taken all the way up until now for them to agree on this one easement agreement that we just did. We had an agreement, but the county came in and let them change the road at the very end before they got approval.
The county allowed them to change the road. I'm taking offense to the county allowed them to change that, because I signed the plat under the ordinance allowance.
It was, we had one plat that was done, and it was approved by DOT, and then within 20 days of them closing out, the county approved a change in where the entrance was at.
The UDO allows you to change your driveway entrance as a minor change, and that's what was approved.
But to a 50-some million dollar water park is a minor change that affects 460 acres behind it? So it's taken us all the way up until now, tons of money with lawyers to get this straight, and now you're telling me, oh, we'll go run on back and approve the RV park, and then you can also go through some more problems?
So, so what you're really asking for is, in conclusion of, of your part of it here tonight, this is, you're asking to have this tabled or postponed until better technical wording from, from you guys can be entered?
I would say the county.
And the county is saying that we don't have a beef in this fight, because who uses the easement is up to them. The text amendment before you is, is not going to change based on who can use an easement or not, that, that, and how many users can use the easement, that, that's not something the county could get involved in.
Okay.
So, so the campground did not request this text amendment, this came from the commissioners.
Signed by the chairman of the.
And it came from the commissioners because two parallel roads are next to each other.
Right, and because at that meeting, all the parties agreed that this was what was desired.
Well, no, I think our party agreed that it was pretty, looked pretty stupid for having two roads parallel to each other, and that, and that it would look better for the main entrance.
It looks, or is it traffic issues on two roads coming out to the main artery? Is that, is that the issue, or is it the look?
It says there was a developed, a development, developed an agreement to allow the use of the existing entry, and he supports the text amendment or variance to allow it, so whether that looks or traffic, I, I don't know, I'm reading from the minutes of the meeting. And I think, I think we really have.
Does DOT, I mean, DOT agreed to the old approval with the two roads?
DOT is a technical review committee member, and they approved the campground.
Previous.
Major site plan.
Would you have objection if we said we denied this wording? Yet approved. I guess a portion of this, I mean, what, what, I mean, what, what, I mean, I'm just curious, I don't know how that fixes your problem if we were to deny it, or, you know, just forget postponed, but what if we were to deny it? How does that affect you?
Well, to me, I feel like there should be some kind of wording in here, just like this cover page right here, it clearly leaves us out, it doesn't even mention us.
It says about all parts.
The people that didn't mention.
You own the easement, you currently own that easement, is that correct, or is that owned by somebody else?
We own 90% of it, and we actually have a egress all the way out to 158 that was supposed to have been used for the main entrance to the water park. And then county staff changed it to allow them to move the road over the 200 yards.
Okay, but if we were to deny this, does that affect you? I mean, you just don't like the aesthetic looks, I'm, I'm trying to understand, if we were to say, we deny it, how does that affect you?
We want, we want to be able to develop our property and be able to use our road when we need to, that's all I'm asking. I could care less if, if they put in a road and RV.
We don't.
Well, then, then somebody needs to do some kind of study to determine how that's gonna affect, if, if the county's gonna let them come in and do a RV park and bump up the amount of traffic that's coming in, then ask them to do a study on it.
That's already been approved, and, but.
Unfortunately, I would have to say that any study would probably be incumbent upon you at this junction that we are at, and that's unfortunate, I mean, it's really first to the race, first to the finish line, yeah, because you can't even tell us what you're gonna put there. So, it's so hard for us, I don't know if this was done for a safety purpose, or if it's the aesthetics, like you're saying, two roads, so, that's where I'm, I'm kinda confused by that, because.
The only reason it was done, in my understanding, and again, you may want to speak to the applicant, was the ordinance language at the time required it, required that all of the access, required that the access for the campground be on the same lot as the campground, and easement is not considered part of the same lot.
Well, it says one parcel, one area.
I'm not sure it, I'm not sure whether we approve or disapprove, it's gonna change what you may do in the future, you may have to do a study if you're going to do it as something that's in a more intensive traffic project. I'm not sure how, either way, our vote is going to affect you having to put out studies, I, I'm not sure if it truly is an effect, and either way, I mean, do you, do you understand what, what we're saying, what I'm saying?
Yeah, but you can also look at the usage, we have, they have all the studies, the county has all the studies for our property there is, so if we were to come in and do like a development, and say you had 1,000 homes back there, I mean, that, that could really affect the usage of that road along with RV park.
Let me understand, if, if we deny or approve, it goes to the commissioners for a vote?
It does.
If we table, it does not?
It does not, but you have to tell us exactly what you're tabling it for, and exactly what you want from us.
And that, that's my question, if it's tabled, if we table it, what's gonna happen? What, what changes, what, you know, what, what is that gonna result in, except to delay and kick the can down the road? If it's tabled, what would come up here when it's brought before us again that would be different than what we're hearing now?
I mean, I could change the memo, but the memo clearly says by all parties using the easement, so I think all parties using the easement are covered, if that's the part that we're picking out that's offensive, I can reword the memo, but the memo is not the text of the ordinance.
And I'm, I'm asking the gentleman here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking at me, I'm sorry.
That's very old boy. Yeah, yeah, but, but what, what is, what's gonna change?
We, we want to make sure, we want to make sure that the wording is in there that the easement is for GB Investments and the water park, until a vote is made to allow them to have a RV park.
Who else has an easement to that property?
Nobody.
Do we have the authority to do that?
I don't think so.
I think he's just looking for an amendment to, to include them in on the amendment, the wording in the amendment, that all parties.
If you make an amendment, you can't specifically tailor it to a party. If it's an amendment, it's in the UDO, and it's gonna be.
Right, I think he's talking about the memo, not the text in the amendment, just the memo itself, my cover memo to the planning board, I think is where we're having offense.
I'm actually, I'm actually more concerned about change than wording to "abut" to be from, to be accessed from, I think that that could seriously inhibit other potential campgrounds.
Well, I agree with that.
I'm, I'm actually concerned about that because if we, you know, if there is another campground that's within that, you know, UDO, that could be a, a, a major.
Right, because if you've got a campground, let's say you've got a potential campground that's gonna be on the water, piece of property that's on the water, and they still, the, the five-mile stipulation is still in there, isn't it, Tammy? They didn't change that, so that, that limits what can develop as far as a campground. This wording, if you've got a beautiful piece of property on the Albemarle or on the Currytuck that does not abut a, a major arterial highway, then that cannot be.
Well, you, you can't do that now.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, you can't do that, because that property wouldn't be accessed from the highway.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
So, that doesn't change, you couldn't do that now or with the text amendment.
Okay.
Unless somebody purchased a easement going out to the road.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which would be fairly easy to do.
If you can get an easement from all of the property owners from the water to the highway.
Well, but we're not talking about your property, I'm talking about the general.
I'm saying in general.
I, I'm concerned about that wording, that's a general wording.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
And I can update the memo to put the words GB Investment in there if the board chooses before it goes to change it.
And if we table it, we could.
I can put all parties, including GB Investment, in the memo, we, we don't have to table it for me to do that.
I, I think that's probably the best answer.
I think the key, key is that all parties, as it said with the direction from the board, was that this paved shared access easement currently in use could, could continue to be used by all parties using the easement, so that this text amendment will not, would not adversely affect that, would have no, no bearing on that.
Right.
I think I could add a little clarity, the way our campground ordinance is currently, it doesn't use the word "abut," but because the property has to be accessed from a major arterial, and it all has to be one parcel, it does have to abut a major arterial. So even though that word "abut" is getting added in, it really doesn't change that the campground is only permitted right along a highway, if that makes sense.
It has to now, just the.
It's just worded, right now, it has to be one parcel, you have to access it, everything has to be one parcel, and because you have to access from a major arterial, the parcel has to be next to a major arterial. So, currently, it doesn't say "abut," but it currently does have to abut a major arterial. So it doesn't, in that regard, it doesn't make it any more restrictive.
I, I, if I, if, I hear what you're saying, I understand that, but I think the big argument here tonight is, is, is the wording to be all-inclusive of all property owners that are currently using that, that easement area.
That's not even a part of the text amendment, that's just in the staff memo to the board.
That's in the memo.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll add the words GB. And I'll, I'll add the words GB investment to the tech, to the staff memo.
Does it need to be, so this needs to be tabled until that's?
No, I can add those, those words to the memo.
All right.
I'll put all parties, comma, including GB investments. I'll type it just like it's on the secretary state's website.
So, so not just overall, I understand this. So if you pass this tonight, so any campground that comes up into county, you're going to want to abut 158 or a major road. So when you're going by, you're going to see the campground.
That's the way it is now.
That's the way it's written.
That's the way it's written.
Put them tucked away back somewhere like they have a road going into them.
That's, that's the way it is now.
The way it's written.
That horse is already out of the barn.
Yeah, the way it's written, it does have to abut. That's what the board of commissioners approved.
Most likely it would be a road that they would put in and be behind a.
A driveway, not necessarily.
That's what, right. So it don't, won't necessarily be viewed from the major.
So what change would Tammy, would you make to the memo? Exactly where would that be?
I would say share easement currently in you would, let's see. Okay. At its July 18th, 2022 meeting, the BOC directed staff to work with the parties involved with the HDX campground rezoning application to fund a compromise so the paved shared access easement currently in use could continue to be used by all parties, comma, including GB investment, and I'll put the proper word there, comma, using the easement as the access point, blah, blah, blah.
I think that's fine. I'm still confused about this one. Who's making the motion on this one?
Anyone else present to comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
I, I got one more question on this.
Okay.
Could you, could continue to use by all parties, including GB investments, using the easement and as the access point for the water park as well as the access point for the campground? There's another piece of property behind the campground.
I'll just say access easement for all parties legally using the access easement.
Okay. Yeah, because it, it does. You've got, you've got the water park and then you've got the campground, then you've got this guy's property behind it.
Yeah, I just need to somehow, I'll say all parties legally using the access point with the addition of a campground. There's, because somehow I've got to specifically say that the campground would be allowed to be able to be accessed by the easement.
Because, because when you, when you talk about GB investments in, in the part you were going to add, you need to close out that sentence acknowledging them as.
That property.
Okay. I can do that.
Right.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
So we table it and wait for that change or?
She said she can do it right now.
It's, it's just the, it's, the text of the UDO is not changing, then that's what you're voting on. You're not voting on my memo. Memo's just an informal. The memo's just an informal conversation between staff and the board. The text is the legal document that you're voting on, then I haven't heard any proposed change to that.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll move to recommend for approval of PB 2216, Currituck County Board of Commissioners Campground Access because it, the request is consistent with the land use plan policies including land use goals in policy two, economic development goals in policy one, transportation goals in policy one. The request is reasonable. It is in a public interest because it is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of a matching Currituck.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, Mr. Balance, do you want to?
And these will go, just so y'all know, it, I forgot to mention it in the last case, the board of commissioners canceled their first meeting in January, so these will go to their second meeting in January, I believe it's the 16th. Is that right?
Uh, yes, January 16th.
17th. Or is it?
16th is? Okay, 17th.
What was that? You're moving the meeting time?
No, this is for the board meeting. And you, you give us an update now.
It's confusing.
There is, there are not any more items on the agenda, so I guess that's it. Any announcements for tonight?
I just have one staffing announcement. If any of you have worked with Savannah Newburn, she is no longer with us. She accepted a job with Dare County and so we wish her all the best of luck moving forward with them. Anna Cherry, who's currently a code enforcement officer, will be stepping into her position as a planner. We think Anna has a bright future and we're really looking forward to working with her. So, so you know what's going on on our staffing.
Congratulations to Savannah.
Yeah. When's, when's your last day?
Uh, she's gone.
Monday was her first day. Yesterday was her first day with Dare County.
All right. They're stealing the good ones away from us, aren't they?
All right, anybody else? I just wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I guess.
Yes, indeed.
We'll see you next year. So, uh, meeting is adjourned.